Call this meeting order. This is our regular meeting Monday, June the ninth at six twenty-six. Okay, we'll call them. Let's do a roll call first. Mr. Burris.
President.
Mr. Tindall.
Here.
Mr. Lucas.
Yeah.
Mr. Goff.
Here.
Cheers here. Okay, now I may as well pass play the lead if we already did that. Approve the agenda. I hear a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second. Got a motion and a second agenda. Any discussion?
I got one addition, Chairman, and that's for Mr. Matt Hayes sitting up here in the front. Okay, alright.
He'll come after this. Okay, alright. I hear we got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Uh.
Alright, okay, agenda approved. Alright, now Employee of the Month, Miss. Wait, yeah, let's do the Employee of the Month first, okay? Ms. Marcia Bryson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How's everybody?
Fine, how you doing?
Good. So, Ms. Marcia was here, but since the work session ran so long, she had to go. She had a prior commitment, but we're still gonna go ahead, so it's on record and she is recognized. She's just not here, so we're not gonna do a photo. But Ms. Marcia Bryson was chosen as the June Employee of the Month. She's been an appraiser tech in our tax assessor's office since September two thousand twenty-three. She was nominated by her department because they feel that she is an outstanding employee who consistently goes above and beyond in her role. She demonstrates a strong dedication to learning and mastering the responsibilities of her position, always striving to improve and grow. Her eagerness to learn is matched by her reliability. Marcia is punctual, detail-oriented, and brings a high level of commitment to everything she does. Marcia is also a true team player. She is always willing to lend a hand to her coworkers, regardless of whether the task falls within her specific job description. Her positive attitude and willingness to support the team make her an invaluable asset to our office. They thank Marcia for her hard work, her dedication, and the example she sets for others. Her contributions do not go unnoticed, and they are proud to have her on their team. So, we wanted to recognize her. We have Tiffany Thomas, who's the Assistant Chief Appraiser here, to just accept the award on her behalf since she had to step out, so I'm gonna let Tiffany come up and just accept it for her.
Okay.
Well, we appreciate Ms. Marcia.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank Ms. Marcia.
Thank you very much.
Thank Ms. Marcia too. Yeah, thank you for having me.
Now, the guest speaker not on the agenda, so Mr. Matt Hayes, he's come up.
And I'll give him a prequel real quick. This is what I come to y'all about before with the airport, and the gentleman that he's gonna get on the phone is the gentleman that actually, he does this nationwide. They do it at all your other airports and everything, and he agreed to call in. I mean, he does what this gentleman's trying to start all over the country, at even major airports.
Oh, y'all, for me, y'all remember what we've been over the last month. Alright, so what I have here is Eric Nelson on the phone, and he already does this with exotic cars, and any questions y'all have, y'all can, he can answer for y'all, or if you need information, Mr. Nelson here can give it to you. Eric, you're by the mic.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for taking the time to have me on. Matt contacted me a week or so ago, and we had a good conversation. He had heard about what we do as a standard operation, and just so you understand who we are and what we do, again, he said, Eric Nelson, I'm the owner-operator Precision Exotics. I created the company in two thousand fourteen. I come from military aviation, been in aviation for thirty years, and what this company does is we have a collection of exotic cars that we own. We go to air shows all over North America. We're literally just coming back from Bino Air Force Base. We got Minon Air Force Base coming up. I know those are two military shows, but we've operated everywhere. We've operated in military shows, military bases. We've operated at small uncontrollable UCOM airfields. We've operated at international airports. So, we've operated as well as Canadian airfields. We're operating in North America. So, we do USA and Canada shows. We've done about a hundred theater shows to date, one hundred percent safety record, and what we do is we can live with our assets, anyone eighteen or valid driver's license, they choose which vehicle they want, they pay a fee. One of my instructors can try and see worse communications on Victor three, with their tower, NACOM or Air Boss, and we do runway runs. So, this is what we do. Matt had some questions on how is it done at a private airfield or a commercial airfield, non-military, especially an uncontrollable UCOM field? It's very, very simple, and I would be happy to provide references to other FISDO offices across America. We can get you something in writing from a FISDO office, because Matt's explained the means, he's troubled with trying to get someone from a FISDO office on the phone. FISDO is your FAA offices that are loved, wherever region has one. So, basically, the PAO at the FISDO office is who would write the letter and explain that how it works, and especially in uncontrollable field, is that's not gonna be what's called a FAR one thirty-nine airfield, which means the only thing that the FAA can do there, they handle grants and funding, and number two, they deal with incidents, okay? So, what I'm meaning by that is if there's an incident, they come in and do an issue with NTSB to find out what happened, but they, from an authority standpoint, if nothing leaves the ground, they have zero jurisdiction. So, what they like, what you would do in this event, the person who is in command of the airport, in this case, the airport manager or the airport director, whatever your structure is, that individual has to give an operational company that's gonna conduct operations on airfield, they have to contract with them and get them permission. It could be an exotic car ride and drive. It could be a kids' day where they bring out, whether bringing out horse rides, or it could be a contract, a general contract, that needs to come out and do work on the airfield itself. The manager hires them, makes a contract with them, and then, as a, not as a requirement, but as a safety measure, the airport manager will issue what's called a NOTAM, Notice of Air. And what that is for is that basically for any pilot in the world that's gonna go flying, say, Bob wakes up on Monday morning and he wants to fly cross-country, but he wants to swing by the airport, he would check the aviation database. He would, he or she would read the NOTAMS in their path, especially to the airport they're going to, say, okay, are there any notes there? I mean, for instance, is there a runway closure? Is there, is there a situation where there's work going on on the runway, and I need to be mindful of, say, half of the runway is unavailable, so on and so forth? So, those NOTAMS are issued. It tells people what's going on at the airfield, and then, what it keeps you from doing is it keeps you from closing the airfield down, because that's when the FAA has no raise their eyebrow at it. So, you're using an aviation-based field to do non-aviation-type activities. Closing the airfield down, they're not doing that. You just issue a NOTAM that lays out the ground operation plan and the activities for that weekend, or for that day, as it were, and that's literally the only requirements there are.
And that comes, that comes straight from the FAA, correct?
That is straight from the FAA, yes.
Okay, so all we have to do is get a notice as a county government and the airport manager, that it's gonna be on this date at this time, from these hours to these hours.
Eric, if I send you an email, can you give them that in writing?
Oh, absolutely. What I'll, what I'll also do, team, is I'm gonna reach out, I'm not sure which region your FISDO falls under, but I know the airport now, Matt, and I've talked. What I'm gonna do is just reach out to a friend of mine that's an FAA PAO in Florida and Orlando, probably not your region, but it's gonna be the closest one that I'm aware of. I'll reach out to him and ask, hey, this woman wanna do this airport? Who's your counterpart at this airport? And what he'll do is he'll broker an introduction between me and whoever his counterpart is for your region, and I'll reach out to that individual with the reference and the support of his counterpart that I know. I say, hey, this airports wanna do this? They've contacted me and asked for my operational support. Can you support or can you supply X, Y, Z? In this case, a, for lack of better terms, a memorandum of understanding that the FAA knows what's going to happen. They understand what's going to happen, like, yes, this is, these are what you're required to do, which requirements are none, but this is what we recommend you do, which is issue a NOTAM, and I can help you guys with that as well. I know, I'm sure you're an airport director and know how to do that, but I can, anybody can actually go on and issue a NOTAM. But what I can do is I can, I can help you do that as well. I'd be happy to help make the event safe and successful in any way that I can. And for those in the room that are curious, like, well, why are you so willing to help? It's very simple, team. Cards on the table. I have built a business, a multimillion-dollar business, doing this for a living. So, when I see other individuals or other entities that wanna do something similar, like every once in a while, we will see, we will see charity events at an airport where a lot of the local high-end clientele wanna bring their vehicles in and do an event like this, I will go in and help and essentially render my services for free, because what does it do? It protects my interests, because in the event that some type of event like this gets conducted, and it's not done the proper way without the right safety mitigation techniques, and something happens, it can negatively affect my business that I've built a lifetime building, in the last fifteen years building. So, that's why I'm so willing to help assist with situations like this.
And see, Eric's also gonna be, he will become, me and him will be getting together, and he will be coming with his cars to put on this event.
Yeah, if it lines up with our schedule, correct?
Okay, Eric, if you will send me your email, please, and I'll take the big gentleman, and I'll take a photo of the counter, and we get that, somehow that stuff in writing, and get it started, so we can go forward maybe for this?
Yes, sir, man. I will give, you know, text you right now, since we got a phone, text you my email address. Please feel free to give it to anyone in the room that needs it. I'll be happy to help.
Do any of y'all have Mr. Eric, a question for Mr. Eric?
I've asked the one. Anybody else got any questions?
Anybody got any question?
Alright, Eric, I'll be calling you back in a little bit.
Okay.
Thanks, man. It was a pleasure, team. I'll work with you.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone.
Alright, thank you. Alright.
So, you see, I think it would be a really good thing for Waycross. You see, he's a multimillion-dollar in your business off of doing exactly what we're willing to bring here to Waycross, and he would bring a clientele in here as well that we don't normally get the opportunity to see, higher-end clientele that would want to come enjoy his vehicles.
We're talking about the kind of vehicles that they do down there?
Maseratis, Ferraris, Lamborghinis, Doug.
What will it bring into the county?
It'll bring gas. They buy gas here, they stay here at our hotels and motels, they eat here. I mean, you're talking about several thousand people come out here to this, thousands of people.
And other businesses also, all your, all your small food vendors that's got trailers and stuff like, we're gonna have them, we would have them there. We would have other businesses as well that would like to bouncy houses. Me and Timmy's done talked about this, you know, these small businesses that rent out bouncy houses and stuff, have stuff for the whole family, not just, not just for one, you know, not just for one group or two groups, even for some of the older guys and women, the elderly, like my mother, would like to get out and see it, but she would need to cool down. I've done talked to one of the rental companies here about getting a tent, for a cool-down tent. In accordance with what time of year we do this, or whatever we can come to a conclusion with, because I want to promote this well enough in advance that I don't wanna rush it. I want it to be its best, because I want the next year to follow up. That's the reason I wanted Mr. Eric here involved in it, you know?
How long would you be talking about? One day, two days?
Oh, just one day.
One day.
We want a one-day event, then we'd have to clean, you know, of course, the second day, we would end up having to clean everything. Like, the vendors come get their porta-johns and, you know, others, you know, some people make sure the airfield's cleaned up, all that kind of stuff.
And it won't be.
Airport won't be down. We would leave one airport, runway open at all times. They're far enough apart, they will never affect us, and we wouldn't affect them.
And the main, the main, our main runway, we only use one. We've got, I think, three out there?
You got three.
But we only use one to land on and take off on, and they will not be close to that line at all. They'll be on the far end, land closest to the wood line.
He would need the longest one, the longest runway?
Well, that would be the second longest.
Well, I'm just saying, he would need, for his cars to run, to do what he wants to do, he would probably need your longest one, because he's already looked at it on the map. He knows exactly where it's at. And I think we fall under the Jacksonville region for the FAA. That would be the next big airport closest to us, so.
And you heard him say that he's already doing this at international airports?
Well, he's done none of it Jacksonville. He has done his event at Jacksonville. So, he knows the area, he's familiar with it, and we wanna do it in a timeframe that's favorable for everybody, but mainly where he can come and, you know, be, he can come swing, close enough to us where he can just drop on by and not be a big expense for him to drop, you know, to send his fleet of vehicles here. And he would be here too. Like I said, he would, he could get with the manager at the airport and let them know everything that's going on, which he'll give all, you know, anybody that wants the information, that information, you know, whatever you need.
That's right. What was the information that was gathered after he came the first time as far as the FFA?
We spoke to G-Dot, that saw representatives out there for our grants and everything, and our engineer, and they said that you couldn't do it. So, that's what they said, if there's anything different on them.
So, that's what he would provide for you?
And he, he will be providing it straight from the federal level, which supersedes the G-Dot.
Right, but we have to consider G-Dot as well, because G-Dot funds some of that funding at the airport, not only just.
But is it lack of knowledge?
It may be.
I think it's a lack of knowledge, because if this gentleman can do it around the world, why can't Waycross?
Well, I'm not saying it's not doable. I'm just saying that's what we were told from the last time, but, you know, if it's lack of knowledge, then we'll.
Better than attorney. Mr. Chairman, go ahead. The legalies part of the liabilities and stuff.
I, I think it's one of those things that if, if there's interest, you know, if a majority of the board wants to see it happen, then I think direction to staff would be, okay, vet this, vet it from an insurance standpoint, as far as county's insurance. You know, that insurance, we would certainly want a contract where any insurance they have names the county as an additional insured agrees to indentify the county for any lawsuit that would result from any injury that occurred out there that day. And then, certainly FAA level, understand, you know, I don't know, I know they don't close down the Jacksonville Airport for a day, so I'm assuming that somehow they have space over here that they're still able to run, but based on, I think, what you all are talking about, it sounds like we would be shutting down our main runway, because you said.
Well, the longest runway, not, I mean, that might be.
Is the longest runway not the main runway? Anybody know that?
That's the main one.
That's what I thought.
That would be the main one.
So, again, you know, there's a lot of vetting, even if we're interested in the idea, you know, I don't think we've got the knowledge at this table to say, we just have to vet all those things and understand what implications are, and we would bring that back to you all and let you all make a decision based on all that information.
The, the only reason I asked that about the knowledge was because I started this endeavor with the, with Dee out there. You know, with the original notion with this, I went straight to him with it, when I found out he was over at the airport. And he just didn't have a clue. He knew out there, he doesn't know, well, all he can do and what he can't do. And he just didn't have a clue. He knew out there, he doesn't know, well, all he can do and what he can't do. So I don't learn a lot as well. So, I mean, with this, with this gentleman here, uh, he, he sat down and spent a, a, a good amount of time with me and he let me know what we can do. And I could put him in with y'all, you know, we can, I'll talk with him directly. He could email y'all back and forth, all the legalities that need to be taken care of. And we will have insurance coverage, um. Whatever we need for insurance. EMS, fire department, all of them will be there.
Okay.
So.
And he's gonna speak with his contact, which is gonna put him.
That's right, he'll be directly contacted with FAA, not, not any other people but FAA.
That's who he goes to, a stretch of the.
That's who he goes to.
What we're saying is we'd have to have approval from G doc and FAA that agree that they.
As of right now, we would have to have that.
Or, or at least we would want.
Go back and talk with them again and let them know what you've learned?
We would wanna understand if, if FAA and G doc are not matching up, we would certainly want to understand the reason for that.
Well, I would be satisfied to say the G doc will probably say whatever the FAA says because they're the ones that control it.
Okay. Alright.
We go by their rules. FAA sets the rules.
Yeah. Anybody else? No, I just think we just need to move cautious, make sure cautious. I mean, it sounds good and all, but you know, just wanna make sure.
And this, this is something I think, well, I mean, I know we'll pack out our hotels and motels.
Look, I could, I could have took this venue to Adele, over to the dragway, okay? There's no problem there. My dragway's big enough to hold all my show cars and do the drug racing that we wanna do.
Or even coffee.
But it's a drag strip. I could grant that drag strip for fifteen hundred bucks a day. That's all it is. It's a dragway. It doesn't do anything for Waycross. Not a dime. Do me plenty, but do nothing for Waycross. When I want something, it's for Waycross. Bottom line.
Okay.
Cause you live here.
Something we hear, I live here, something we can enjoy, I spend my money here. I make my ton of money out of town, but I'm, I spend my money in this town. And I feel like, I, you know, everybody should do that. And I wanna bring something to Waycross.
That'll bring us a lot of taxes.
I think it would. I think it would bring, I think it would be, I think after the second or third year, you'd probably have to build a few more hotels.
So our, our, our direction, our direction in the commission would be to try to vet it and bring back a report.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, the best thing.
Okay.
And you start with that guy.
Drag our feet, we just wanna make sure we.
Okay.
And then let them be in contact, the FAA be in contact with him.
Yeah.
And then he'll come back to us.
Uh, that sounds good.
Alright, Matt, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Matthew. Thank you for bringing.
Okay.
In the conduct, make sure.
Alright. Approve, um, meeting minutes. I hear a motion that we approved the minute. You read them off.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Who you gonna read them off? Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'll promote that we approved the meeting minutes of September ninth. Twenty twenty four, September twenty third, September thirty first, twenty twenty four. January sixteenth, twenty twenty five, January thirtieth, February the sixth, February the thirteenth. March seventh, twenty seventh, April fourteenth, April fourteenth, public hearing. April fourteenth, regular meeting, May twelfth, public hearing, May twelfth, twenty twenty five. Uh, regular meeting. Okay.
Now that one at the top up there, is that a typo? The March twenty seventh, twenty twenty four, should that be twenty five?
That is a typo.
Okay. March. Twenty five, I think. Okay, got a motion for the. Meeting minutes, they got a second. Alright. We got a second.
Correction of March twenty seventh being twenty twenty five, not twenty twenty four. Okay.
Alright.
Mr. Chairman, uh, just wanna make a note that, uh, I was not in office for those first three meetings. So I just wanted to. Put out there that I may or may not have been at the, one of the, any of those meetings. I think I wasn't December thirty first meeting, but uh, but the, the September ninth, September twenty third, I was not there. I wasn't, I wasn't in office yet.
Mr. Chairman, not vote on them or.
And I would assume the same would be true for Commissioner Cox. You still have the ability to approve them as a body. So there's no harm in you, if you feel comfortable voting on it. But if you would like to abstain, given that, then that would be appropriate also, I think.
Mr. Chairman, I, I wasn't in office, but I was here at the meetings, so I'm fine with it.
And I'm fine with voting on it. I just wanted to make it a point that those three meetings, I was not in office.
Certainly, certainly.
Alright. Okay, got a motion and a second. Any more discussion on? Now let's vote on them. Mr. Burson, aye. Mr. Tindall, aye. Mr. Lucas, aye. Mr. Cox, aye. Chair votes aye. Okay. Now we'll go to the addenda items on the new one. Okay, A, MOU for the Ware County and Oakley Pinocchio Library System. I hear a motion on that. Mr. Chairman, I'll promote that we, uh, approved the MOU with Ware County. And, uh, for our regional library system.
I'll say.
Okay, got a motion and a second.
And I'd like to reiterate something on that chair if I could.
Okay.
And that's the fact that before the renovation started at the library. The county did pay a hundred twenty six thousand, six hundred thirteen for roof and boiler replacement at the facility. And fifty thousand dollars in HVAC work. Replaced all the HVAC units on the top of the building when they re-roofed it. And they also replaced a bunch of duct work. And that was our portion towards the one million, ten thousand.
Yeah, ten percent match we had to give on it. That's what we got, the ten percent, we, we paid up. They recognize that.
Yeah.
I think we paid more.
We paid about twenty-two percent is what we paid.
Yeah.
But yeah, they recognize that as us, our part.
Alright, any more discussion on? Alright, let's vote on it. Mr. Burson, aye. Mr. Tindall, aye. Mr. Lucas, aye. Mr. Cox, aye. Chair votes aye. Alright. Now. Be approved the contract with craft development for library renovation.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the craft development contract in the amount of seven hundred fourteen thousand, seven hundred and sixteen dollars. As presented by Ms. Steinbridge, which is the. Steinbridge, and she is the library president, is that right?
Director.
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 Library director. She was here earlier, but she's gone now.
Yeah. Okay, and then you got a motion?
I, I made that motion that we accepted.
Second.
You got a second, okay. Any discussion? Now let's vote on it. Mr. Burson, aye. Mr. Lucas, aye. Mr. Tindall, aye. Mr. Cox, aye. Chair votes aye. Okay. Alright, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Cox to be able to co-chair because I have a conflict of interest, I guess, in this, whatever they say.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright, see, approve Hofstadler contract with Thrift Brothers for Dirk Street paving. For Pascal Road, McDonald Road, Cornelius Road, and Griffin Road. And we was gonna check on the right of way, uh, uh, James, what did you find out about it?
I, I couldn't find it at that sort of time, but I'll have to look at the easement, um. Find out easement between, um, the county and, and Junior, James Ford Junior, I think it was.
Yeah.
A Junior, Mr. Junior, but, um, in the meantime, I think I'm gonna actually get ahold of Timmy, the owner now. And see what his thoughts are on just, um, maybe dedicating that right of way to the county fee and something. And we'll get it that way.
You talking about the, uh?
Between the category gaps.
Yeah, he said, he's already said that he would. He's already said that he would give that back to the property or.
Who said, who said that now?
That guy, Timmy, that owns the property now. He's a farmer assistant in Atlanta.
Okay.
So I'll reach out to him.
Well. And if it's not gonna cause, I would, I would like to offer a motion that we table this until. We get something in writing from this gentleman about the, get, uh, dedicating the right of way, giving the right of way to the county. And then we can proceed on. That's, that's my thing. That way, we won't have any hiccups later on.
I go with Mr. Leonard on that thought. Commissioner Burris.
Could that be a second?
For what Mr. Burris proposed, yes?
Motion and then a second?
Yep.
Okay, alright, let's go for a vote. Mr. Burr, aye. Mr. Tindall, aye. Mr. Lucas, aye. And the co-chair votes aye.
We'll note for the minutes that the chairman abstained on this vote.
Okay.
Okay.
So we will bring that up at the next, next meeting.
Next meeting, we'll have to bring it up.
And I think, I'll just hope that maybe not only that, but then we have time to look at this other thing you're talking about, that. Sixty away, sixty foot, right? I mean, just to get everything clear.
We're getting the scope changed too from engineers, so everybody's on the same page.
So we proceed, we can move on, you know?
What, what's the, um, outcome if we can't get a right of way through there?
Then you just don't pay that, leave it as is.
Just leave it as is and put a.
If you can't get a right of way, if, if we can't, if they can't give us a right of way, I would, you know, my, my suggestion would be to quarter cycle it.
Quarter cycle it in the cattle gap.
And you have to go around, yeah.
Okay, but if we left it like it is right now?
There would be a big drop and then a big uphill if we paved it now. Without including those cattle gaps, you gonna have, because when I was talking to the Little Johns. It's already a bump bump now. Because when they go in there and they grade those roads. They're pulling all that dirt up to the road and the road's actually higher than the cattle gap now.
What, what I'm saying, if we can't verify the easement or we can't get the right of way, then we would have quarter cycle it.
Put a turnaround right there.
Desires, if we verify the easement, they don't wanna get a right of way, but the commission, and we verify the easement. And the commission desires to pave it on the easement, then we'll pave it on easement.
Yeah.
You know, if that's what the majority of the commission wants to do.
Yeah, I think that's, cause the whole thing is, it's pretty much been bidded out to pave all the way through.
Right.
So, but now we just, now we need to find out if we actually have that land or do we have an easement? And if we do have easement, like I said, the last resort, we can still pave it based on what the attorney said on easement.
If we got that perpetual easement, which we've had that perpetual easement since what, nineteen fifty-six is when he put it?
I don't know.
Around the fifty-six, fifty-seven time?
I've read it, but I don't remember exactly anything, so.
I, I think that would be the wise impruner thing to do at this point is to make sure we, just try to. Cross all the Ts and dot all the Is and as best we can, you know, stuff there to come up with.
I agree with Commissioner Burr on that.
Alright, I'll turn it back over to the chairman.
Okay, let's go to the D. Uh, MOU with the city of Waycross for Public Safety Training Center.
This is which one?
Hear a motion on that one?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the MOU with the city of Waycross for the Public Safety Training Center.
D.
Okay, I'll second that motion. We got a motion and a second.
Without, um, removing number seven, paragraph seven.
Yes, with removing paragraph number seven.
Seven was about what now?
Yeah, the indemnity.
Okay, okay, definitely, okay. Alright, we got a motion and a second. Any discussion, any more discussion on it? Let's vote on it. Mr. Burson, aye. Mr. Tindall, aye. Mr. Lucas.
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Cox, aye. Chair votes aye. Alright, E, Board Appointment. For Department of Family and Children's Services. Now that's.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we renew Linda Booker's Ware DeFacts Board Appointment. For a period of five years to begin on July first of twenty twenty-five. And end on June thirtieth of twenty thirty, year twenty thirty.
Second.
Okay, got a second. Any discussion? Let's vote on it. Okay, Mr. Burson, aye. Mr. Tindall, aye. Mr. Lucas, aye. Mr. Cox, aye. Chair votes aye. Okay. Alright, let's go to F, Purchase Request for ADG Software License Upgrade. We want to take that. Mr. Chairman, I'll promote that we, uh, accept the purchase request for the ADG Software License Upgrade.
Second.
Now is that for, is that for both departments or just one?
That's just that, uh, one department, I think, right now, isn't it?
That's, that's for both.
All of them, all of them. That's for the finance department and the, uh, code department, okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Be the eighty, how much is it? Eighty-five thousand?
Eighty thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Eighty, okay.
Mr. Chair, I would like to make a, a comment here on this. Uh, if they were separated.
Hold on, let me get the, the motion correct now. Okay, I was gonna say, we are accept the purchase request for ADG Software License Upgrade in an amount of eighty thousand, seven hundred, fifty dollars.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Now discussion.
Discussion would be, I, I believe if they would have been independently and done separately, it could have went straight through the county manager. And would not have come to us, but I believe it still has to go to the county manager for his signature. Because we're talking about two different departments. You're talking about the finance department and you're talking about the codes department. It's two separate departments. And if they were separated and not put together in this, our county manager could have signed them. Because he handles day to day operations and nothing for us to approve here because he's got the approval to do up to fifty K. He could have done both of them. That's just food for thought for future.
Is that?
Not on, um, not on non-budgeted item. If it was any, if it was the budgeted item, then the, uh, spending limit goes up, but this is a s lost item, so it comes before.
Right.
For the commission, it was not, it was never, it, um, announced.
No budget set for.
Uh, yeah, it was never announced that ever gonna do this during the s lost stuff, it just falls under IT.
Right, we, we have floss funds for this, right?
Yes.
Two twenty-two.
We got another one there in the camera.
Well, I apologize for that, but.
I think that's still a good point, you know, but like I say, but this is, uh, wasn't a budgeted item and it's something that's just floss. Okay. And, uh.
That's my lesson for today. I'll take it.
Listen, I read that thing like three times a day.
Well, I appreciate you setting me straight, cause hey, I'm human. I make mistakes all the time.
Well, let's vote on it. We got a motion and a second.
Yep.
Is that discussion? Any more discussion on? Okay, Mr. Burson, aye. Mr. Tindall, aye. Mr. Lucas, aye. Mr. Cox, aye. Chair votes aye. Okay. Now.
Now, did we put the total in there?
Let me get.
Yeah.
Eighty thousand, seven. Eighty, yeah, he, he read it on.
Good deal. Thank you, Commissioner.
I wanted to clear that up.
Right.
What? Okay. Let me see where I'm at now. IT Purchase Request. Yeah, we'll go to G, alright. The IT Purchase Request for PC Units.
Mr. Chairman, I make a move that we, uh, approve the purchase of twenty computers. At total cost twenty-one thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two dollars and eighty cents.
I'll say it.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Now, is any discussion on that one?
Just wanted to make it known that those computers are being purchased because the. Software upgrade we did. Couple months ago or whatever, that, those twenty computers that we're replacing were, uh, obsolete.
Obsolete, okay.
They have to be replaced in order to be able to use the new or updated programming.
Thank you for that, Mr. Tindall. Okay, is any more? Okay, let's, uh, vote on it. Mr. Burson, aye. Mr. Tindall, aye. Mr. Lucas, aye. Mr. Cox, aye. Chair votes aye. Alright, H, Approved Subscription Renewal for a Code Red Public Alerting System.
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept. Ware County Government. AD, you talking about the ADG Electronic Requisition Software?
H, yeah, no, it's H. H.
H.
Renewal of the Code Red Public.
Code Red.
The Code Red, the Code Red. What's it, uh, you find it? ADG. What's that, twenty-six thousand?
Senator G.
Twenty-six.
Or J.
Or J.
J.
Senator J on the tab.
Yeah, J. Yeah, J.
All right, yeah.
Twenty-two.
On the agenda, Sunday.
This is the one that we get fifty percent from the city?
Yes.
And the total price is eighteen thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars and forty-three cents?
Yes.
And that is to be split annually, every year with the city? The yearly renewal?
Okay, what?
And that's with the company own solve. And I did say the total amount, eighteen thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars and forty-three cents. And that's for a one-year subscription with them.
Okay.
Got to visit this every year.
You got it.
Is that your motion?
We got a.
All right, I'll second.
You got a second. All right, I got a motion and a second. Any discussion on it? All right, let's vote on it. Mr. Burson?
Aye.
Mr. Tindall?
Aye.
Mr. Lucas?
Aye.
Mr. Cox?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay. Approved for Crowder Gulf Contract for Debris Removal.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the request for contract to be approved with Crowder Gulf for debris removal during a declared natural disaster. Contract period for this one year, with operation to renew for an additional four years.
Okay, you got any?
Is it two or four?
The removal is four.
Four, four additional years.
The removal is four, uh, consulting is two.
Two, sorry.
Okay.
I know.
This, this is for Crowder Gulf, to renew our contract?
Monitoring is two, and Crowder Gulf is additional four.
Right.
I'll take it.
He got a motion and a second. Now, is any discussion, second, Mr. Chairman?
I did.
Mr. Burson? Cox?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to, just let it be known that we have a contract, so in the event that we need their services, they'll, they'll be available to us, um, at the price deemed. And then, um, but we don't pay anything unless we use their services.
Right. We just sign a contract with them, and they'll respond. They done a great job when they came this fast and cost a bunch of money, but they've done a great job.
Cost a bunch of money.
Cost a bunch of money.
I'm, I'm thinking we need to do away with them. That, that's my thing.
I'm glad, I'm glad Mr. Jonathan didn't hear it out.
Let's, let's get our money back first, son.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, you might, you might, you might need to go out now.
Let's get the money back.
Keep our money six more months off.
I go along with you on that.
I clean that off, man. I can't see that.
And just so the taxpayers know, that the money's being recircled back from the federal government, so it's not costing the taxpayers any money.
We hope.
Right, Mr. County Manager?
We ain't got nothing yet.
We had gotten the money, sir?
That's how it's supposed to work.
That's right.
That's how it's supposed to work.
Well, basically, it's costing us money right now.
Well.
Cause we're not gaining interest on that money that you had.
We're not gaining interest.
We're losing a lot of money.
But when we get it, it's gonna be making a pile.
I don't wanna give a man a contract and pay him, and, and if I got the money.
Well, I, I, I hope we don't have another hurricane like we just had. That's what I'm praying for.
Somebody said they gonna pay you the money, they wouldn't give it to you, but. All right?
I agree.
Any more discussion?
No, sir. No, sir.
All right, let's vote on it. Mr. Burson?
Aye.
Mr. Tindall?
Aye.
Mr. Lucas?
Aye.
Mr. Cox?
Aye.
Chair vote, no. Okay. Approved Thompson Consulting Contract for Debris Monitoring.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve Thompson Consulting Service Contract for Debris Monitoring. They will actually monitor Crowder Gulf's work by weight, tonnage, everything. That's how we get the financial numbers we get is through that company that works hand-in-hand. Is that correct?
Them.
Is that correct, Mr. Jonathan? They monitor Crowder Gulf.
Right, and they'll monitor them.
Chairman Thred?
When Kay, y'all point me, I'll monitor.
I'll second that motion.
Okay.
With the chairman monitoring it?
Okay, any discussion? Any discussion? If not, let's vote on it. Mr. Burson?
Aye.
Mr. Tindall?
Aye.
Mr. Lucas?
Aye.
Mr. Cox?
Aye.
Chair votes no. Okay. The Resolution for twenty twenty-five dash twelve Private Property Rights for the United Nations. Now, Mr. Cox, put that one on the book.
Mr. Chairman, I, I recommend we, uh, approve this resolution of twenty twenty-five dash twelve Private Property Rights for the United Nations.
Okay.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, the only thing I'm saying, I appreciate Mr. Cox and, you know, like I say, it's been getting called, but I just don't, I think this is kinda like, almost like a new point, in my opinion, I'd like to say, based on what I know about it. And, uh, I don't really see what the value of it would be to you to do it, but, you know, it's here for us to vote on it.
Okay.
And I would like to add to it, since we've already had a motion and a second, that this summary, what Mr. Cox is putting on the floor, says this is a resolution that states Ware County will not adopt any regulations that may infringe upon or restrict private property rights without due process in violation of the United States Constitution.
Okay.
Is that correct, Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Any more discussion on it?
No, sir.
All right, let's vote on it. Mr. Burson, no. Mr. Lucas?
Aye.
Mr. Tindall?
Aye.
Mr. Cox?
Aye.
And the chair vote aye. Okay. Surplus Request for Building at Three Eighty-seven Ozzy Davis Parkway.
Three seventy-eight.
Three, three seventy-eight, excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Burson.
Mr. Chairman, I, I move we, uh, surplus the building at Three Seventy-eight Ozzy Davis Parkway.
I'll second it.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, let's vote on it. Mr. Burson?
Aye.
Mr. Tindall?
Aye.
Mr. Lucas?
Aye.
Mr. Cox?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. All right. E, Managers Comment.
Another time, I said it in the workshop session.
Okay, Commission Comment.
Mr. Chairman, I, I've got, um, I, um, I've been approached by some people, uh, throughout the county that would, um, like to recognize Mr. Darwin Lee, um, out in the Bickley area. Um, he got, um, put into the, uh, Georgia Music Hall of Fame.
Hall of Fame.
And, uh, he's from the Bickley area, and they would like to just, maybe let's put a sign out there, uh, and, uh, you know, recognizing him in that area, and if it's okay with y'all, I'll, I'll follow up and, and see that it gets done, so.
That's a good idea.
That is supposed to been already done.
Yeah, I think we voted on it. How many?
We voted on it.
Never voted on it. You asked about it one time, and we looked at, um, that.
I thought.
I thought it was not approved.
That never been on the agenda.
Yes, it has been on here one time. We done brought that up.
Since I've been here, it hasn't. You talked to him, he been like, call every agenda we've had and show you that it has not.
What about before? Have you looked at the ones before you got here?
I haven't looked at anything since before I've been here.
Because this is like three years ago.
Yeah, it's been on there.
It's, it's been on there. It's, we voted on it.
But Darwin Lee?
Anything, I was gonna say, it's from the board.
Yeah.
You talked to him.
Darwin Lee?
Yeah, it was like three and a half years ago. Yeah.
Maybe I forgot, but I.
Teresa might have it.